One, two, three, boardroom mic check.
Mic check to the boardroom for captions. I see captions appear, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Joining us for today's meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, I'd ask at this time, the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, here.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
I am here as well, all over present, would you all join me, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and thank you for being here today or for watching online. If you are here in person today, can you do me a favor, check your cellphone or any other noise-making device that you may have brought with you, and can you please check and ensure that it is on silent or it is turned off? We really appreciate your cooperation with that. I'm going to start today with a proclamation from the podium. Today it's our great honor to recognize a crucial piece of public safety in Johnson County. We are very proud to recognize pretrial, probation, and parole supervision week. It's a reminder of the critical role that community corrections professionals play in our justice system. These are individuals who work diligently, often it's behind the scenes, but that support rehabilitation, protect public safety, give people a second chance to build better lives, whether it's through supervising their pretrial release, or supporting reentry after incarceration, or guiding individuals who may be on probation or parole. Their work helps reduce recidivism, it strengthens our communities, and ensures accountability in a way that is not only fair, but is constructive and proactive. They are counselors, they are social workers, they are mentors, they are motivators. They face challenges with compassion, professionalism, and as always, an unwavering commitment to justice. And their efforts help turn setbacks into success, creating safer communities and offering hope, sometimes where it's most needed. So I am proud to proclaim the week of July 20th through the 26th as pretrial, probation, and parole supervision week, and I want to express my deep gratitude to the important work that's being done in Johnson County. Please join me in welcoming Rachel Messed, the Director of Field Services, to say a few words.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, Rachel Messed with Department of Corrections, and thank you for having us. Pretrial, probation, and parole supervision week was established by the American Probation and Parole Association in 1999. This effort began to recognize the need to highlight the contributions of pretrial, probation, and parole officers in public safety. It emphasizes the role these professionals play in protecting our communities and changing the behaviors of individuals involved in the criminal justice system. This year's theme is heroes behind the mission, transforming lives and enhancing public safety. On behalf of the Johnson County Department of Corrections, we thank you for this proclamation. With me today are Senior Case Managers Nanette Rosess, Stacy Troutman, and Becky Seidler, Intensive Supervision Officers Ben McGlamory and Courtney Schaefer, and House Arrest Officer Tim Hoffman. They are representatives from Adult and Juvenile Intensive Supervision, Probation, House Arrest, and our Residential Center, all who play a pivotal role in supporting our mission. Probation and parole are critical alternatives to incarceration. They keep people connected with the community in which they will return while reducing the risk of future crimes. Staff are tasked with balancing behavior change and public safety. This recognition honors how difficult community supervision can be, working with all kinds of offenders, including those who have complex needs such as mental health and substance abuse. Thank you for your support, acknowledgement, and appreciation for all they do.
Thank you all very much. At this time, we're going to move to our public comment portion of the agenda. It's an opportunity for folks to discuss items of county business that do not otherwise appear on today's action agenda. If you do want to speak on an item that's on the agenda, we do ask that you register for that item in advance, and if you happen to speak on one of the action items during this general public comment session, we're going to ask that you refrain. We do ask that when you come to the dais, you state your name and the community in which you reside. The public comments are limited to two minutes. There's a clock on either side of the dais that will assist you with that time period. If you happen to go beyond that time period, we will ask that you go ahead and conclude your comments. We do ask that members of the public refrain from remarks that are personally offensive, impertinent, profane, or slanderous, that would otherwise insult or demean any person or groups of persons. If we happen to stray into that kind of public comment, we will ask that it be redirected. If it continues, we will ask that you step aside from the dais. We allow folks to register in advance, and so I'm going to call on those who have registered for public comment in the order that they registered. The first name on my list is Ben Hobart.
Ben Hobart, Westwood Hills. Chairman Kelly, Commissioners, the Attorney General's Opinion Number 2025-13 contends that this Board's Resolution 052-25, if reviewed by a court of competent jurisdiction, would be found to be null and void because it exceeds the Legislature's grant of taxing authority under KSA 12-187B21. I have reviewed the Attorney General's opinion and find it to be clear, convincing, and correct. The public should know that the so-called Public Sales Tax, Safety Sales Tax III, was tailored to fund the construction of the new Johnson County Courthouse in Olathe. It was enacted under a statutory grant of authority which is absolutely distinct and separate from the grant of authority for the Public Safety Sales Taxes I and II. This is extremely important and controlling, because the county is not free to define the purposes of this tax outside the limited and specific scope of KSA 12-187B21. The Attorney General's opinion does not address other facts not relevant to the legal analysis, but which should concern any Johnson County citizen. This tax, if enacted in violation of law, would impose a $196.4 million tax increase. The courthouse capital project cost $182 million, with an additional ultimate interest cost on the bonds of approximately $3.4 million. This Board recently authorized funding of a cost of a new adjacent parking ramp, with the county's one-half share being $11 million. Total project costs $196.4 million. This Board wants that tax to continue even though its purpose has been completed. The $196.4 million would be rolled into the operating budget, resulting in a huge tax increase on Johnson County, and a slush fund for funding governmental largesse in other areas. This was made clear in your committee of the whole on May 1, 2025. I have transcribed the exchange between Commissioners Hanslick and Deputy County Manager Julie Carons. I provide eight copies of that exchange for the Board. Thank you for receiving my comments.
Thank you. Next is Lane Sekovic.
Pronounced it right, Chairman.
Sometimes I get lucky.
The question I have, Lane Sekovic, DeSoto, the question I have is, on my tax, property tax remittance documentation this last round, I could pay online, et cetera, which I do, but I could also send my payments to Johnson County Property Tax, an appeal box in St. Louis, Missouri. I'm born and bred in Kansas, lived here for 60 years and change. Why would this county not just use a Kansas company, not just use a Johnson County company, because I'm sure they're capable, but not even a Kansas company? We sent this to the other side of Missouri for them to process our check tax payments. I don't know what level this decision was made. I don't know if it was a functionary, their boss, a department director, or you. I want my money to stay where I live, whether it's Johnson County or Kansas. I don't need it to go out of state. It's could have been Paraguay, for all I know. I don't want it to leave the state, I don't want it to leave the county. So that's all I've got for you today. Appreciate you hearing me, and have a good Friday.
Thank you. Next is Brian Perkins.
Good morning, Brian Perkins. I currently reside in Olathe, Kansas, and I'm homeless. When you lose money, you lose nothing. When you lose your health, you lose something. When you lose your character, you lose everything. A gentleman at the library that Don spoke about last week, that had an odor problem, was asked to not come back to the library. A Johnson County library he cannot come back to until he showers. Uncalled for. To that, to this point, it's uncalled for. Dave, the gentleman that has had surgery, and had fell off his bike four times in a week, had surgery on his neck and replaced vertebrae with metal, has said to me now three times, "I missed my ticket to life. I missed my ticket to life." These are my friends, this is my family. There are so many people beyond us at this stage of life right now. How much longer is the fight for survival going to keep going? How many more wrong choices are going to be made before, like, that we could have avoided with positive outcomes? It's quick, guys, it's quick. My situation is a one-off, like, it's temporary, I was in a, I'm in a work comp case. I'm receiving something big, small, or indifferent, but there's thousands of people that need help. My situation is temporary. I had to go to Missouri because there's nothing here, in September, October, November. Thank God for Project 20, I thank God every day. But I was lost. I lost hope, I lost myself in three months. And it continues to happen every day, and it's with a lot of elderly people. How much longer do we have, guys? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Phil Bauer.
Hi, my name's Phil Bauer. I live in Leewood in the First District, and I'm here today to give you more information on how to reduce property taxes in 2026, instead of the current plan to increase property taxes by 6.23%. Current plan is a $22.8 million tax increase. Now, I've given you a plan showing how we can save $34.9 million and achieve a 3% tax decrease. As you know, the bulk of the savings that I've outlined is to not replace the Corinth Library. The replacement will cost taxpayers $33 million, $33 million. Last week, I learned from Library Administration that the main reason they want to replace it is because it's part of the comprehensive library master plan. In other words, this Board approved a plan 10 years ago, so we'll do it. It's part of the master plan. The top two priorities that patrons have asked for, for a new and improved Corinth Library, as told to me by Library Administration, are to, one, include a drive-through, two, add more study rooms. With some smart planning, smart planning, both of these can be incorporated into the current space. So my request to you today is to do that. Renovate the library, fix the leaky spots, plan the space to include those two priorities that patrons have asked for, and keep the cost under $1 million. You ought to be able to do this for $1 million. Even with that amount to renovate, we can still lower property taxes for the citizens of Johnson County. So let's do it. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Charlotte O'Hara.
Good morning, Charlotte O'Hara. I stand before you again and ask, of what value are these books that are in our school libraries and our public libraries? What value are they to our children? I know that you will not respond, and I know that you will not do anything to get rid of these horrendous books. I can't read what's in them, because I would violate the, your policy of profane and obscene language, but yet this is available to our children. The other thing I want to talk about is the sales tax, which the Attorney General has deemed that you have exceeded your authority. If you could learn to live within your budget and not go forward with this sales tax or another version of it, over a five-year period, I'm sorry, over a 10-year period, you would be returning $540 million to the pockets of the people of Johnson County. And my other question is, is it your job to raise $17 million annually for the cities? Is that your job? Because if this, if this sales tax does go forward, $34 million a year will come, will come to the county, and it will be in the slush fund, general fund, it will not be specified unless you have to go back and actually adhere to the law, and $17 million to the cities. So is that your job, to raise revenue for the cities? Thank you.
All right, I believe that's all the registered public commentators we have for today. Thank you, everybody. I'll be looking at some notes for the record now, so thanks for your patience. Today, I will be signing the following. First is a partial release of easement for Johnson County wastewater due to the reduction of easement requirements for sanitary sewer line. Further, I'll be signing three full release of easements for Johnson County wastewater due to the removal of sanitary sewer line in the vicinity of Johnson Drive and Martindale Road, that's in the city of Shawnee. At this time, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I will note that Commissioner Ashcraft has asked that numbers five and number eight be removed from the consent agenda, and so at this time, I'll ask if there is a motion for the consent agenda as amended. Commissioner Hanslick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Allenbrand, second.
So moved by Commissioner Hanslick, and then seconded by Commissioner Allenbrand, but the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and none against, is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Okay. We'll move on at this time then to item number five, which is a term and supply contract with DH Pace Company for on-call door repair and maintenance services. I believe Matt Dedekie from Facilities is here, welcome back. You gave us a presentation at last week's agenda review. Commissioner Ashcraft, you've asked that this be removed. Questions or comments at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Dedekie, I appreciated meeting with you earlier this week. I was wondering, though, if you could offer some elaboration. On the briefing sheet, at the end of the background section, you indicated that this effort will reduce operating expenses. Could you elaborate on that a little bit, please?
Absolutely. Let me start by saying, the conversation that we had was, was good, had the opportunity to try to explain this directly. The word "will" maybe should have been changed to "may" in that statement, and I would like to say that that statement is regarding the operational contract that we were looking at for the Med Act stations specifically. Based off of the experience from our department, when we increase the PMs, we update programmatic changes.
PMs, I'm sorry.
Project, I'm sorry, preventative maintenance.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Preventative maintenance measures increase, we update, and we start to look at putting items that are antiquated onto a CRP, which would be your capital replacement program. We tend to see reduction in problems. So with those assumptions, we assume that there would be fewer responsive calls, which would reduce the costs. To say it will reduce the cost is probably inaccurate, because over the next contract term, the next three years, we will include more doors in our county. This number could increase, this number could stay the same. But the intent there was, by increasing our awareness, our training, and our system components, we would anticipate not only better operation for the users, but probably a reduction in costs.
One follow-on, then, Mr. Chair. Mr. Dedekie, thank you. You referenced training, and that's what I wanted to explore just a little bit.
Yes, sir.
Obviously, this firm has a lot of expertise, and as you've indicated, they will share that with staff. But I was trying to understand, is that the best mechanism for training staff versus, and I'm just spitballing here, if colleges or training facilities like the Community College, don't they offer training, and would, would that not be as cost-effective or even more so, and was that considered?
So yes, overall, the training programs that we're looking at for facilities management related to the maintenance side, I'm starting to dig into that. We have talked through some options with other agencies. This one's pretty straightforward, it's included in, in our relationship. It is specific to the doors they're operating on, so they can speak directly to the equipment that we have versus a generalized education. And then there's a line there of, where do we support? We have education reimbursement, absolutely, that could go to individual growth. Where do we step in and provide outside training? So we do, we do look at a lot of these options, but our relationships with our vendors are very direct and aligned with what we're working on.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Allenbrand.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say that owning and operating nursing and healthcare communities, that whenever a door breaks, it's always after hours. So to me, this is a smart business plan for you to put into place. You know, there's nothing worse than even in your own home, you know, when the alarm goes off because it's broken or needs to repair, it's always about 2:00 or 3:00 a.m. in the morning, so I appreciate your, your, I started calling it spreadsheet, the briefing sheet, so I think that you will save money. Again, I think you're right on that you're going to add more doors in the future, so it could cost more, but, thank you. And Chair, if you want, I have a motion.
Let me make sure that everybody's had an opportunity to address the item first, but I will come back to you for that motion. Thank you. Commissioner Brewer.
Just want to affirm my understanding of the response that you gave to Commissioner Ashcraft. So what I'm hearing is that you're focusing more on preventative maintenance, so that you don't have situations, especially in emergency situations when you need the door to work, or after-hours situations, which I assume calling out repair services is at a higher rate. And And baked into the relationship with the contractor is an opportunity to make sure staff has a training and education on the specific product that is being utilized at these facilities. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
And then in your fundings portion of the briefing sheet, this is still within your budgetary scope. It's just it exceeds the $150,000 in, in the bump up of approval, and that's why it's coming before us? Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Then we'll go to Commissioner Allen Brand for her motion, please.
Thank you, Chair. I move to increase expenditure authority for the term and supply contract with DH Pace Company for on-call door repair and maintenance services in the amount of $175,000 for revised total contract value, not to exceed $300,000 for the current contract term and the remaining three 12-month renewal options available per invitation for bid, FB 2023-059.
Myers, second.
Moved by Commissioner Allen Brand, seconded by Commissioner Myers. Any further questions or comments on this one? Seeing none, that's the clerk. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye. We have seven in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Dedeky. Appreciate your time today. At this time, we'll move on to item number eight. Item number eight is an appointment to the Criminal Justice Advisory Council of Mr. Corey Schramm, Resolution Number 093-25. Commissioner Ashcraft, you asked that this be removed. Comments, questions on this one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I was going to ask Commissioner Trent. Counselor Trent, is this the last one for this board, or will there be additional forthcoming?
Chair and Commissioners, this should be, let me check, because last meeting, if you recall, you had numerous appointments. This one was omitted accidentally. It should have been brought forward. It was in the resolution but not in the motion, and that is legal staff error that caused this one. But with this one, at this point, I am unclear. It probably should be. We have so many appointments for each district, and I was not prepared for your question in advance this meeting, so I apologize. But it looks like to me it is. We are full now, complete. But I can't say for sure unless I go one by one for each Commissioner, because the Chair has four appointments, you have various appointments, and I'd have to count it.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, I was going to ask that, from this point forward, any fifth district nominations to boards and commissions, I'd like to ask that it go through the agenda review process and be posted as such and handled that way rather than just being put in with no prior information.
I understand your request. I'm happy to talk about that, but we did have a session regarding the rules of order and processes for these boards and commissions. And while you may have been on the opposite side of the vote there, I think the will and majority is to go through our current process, and I think the will of the majority of the board should be respected.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the rules of order say that it may be done. It is not required to be done, and I would like to ask that mine be taken through agenda review.
Appreciate your request. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to go ahead. Commissioner Hanslick, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to clarify with the legal counsel, it's, it's really not possible to say that these appointments won't ever come again because, first of all, they, the people on the boards and commissions have a limited term. And secondly, they, they are, it's not a life appointment. They may, they may leave, they may decide in the middle of their term. So we're always going to be having new appointments coming for these various boards and commissions. Is that not correct?
Chair and Commissioner, yes.
Yep. All right. For the, I'm not seeing any further questions on this, and since it's my appointment, I'll make the motion that I move the Board of County Commissioners to approve Resolution Number 093-25, appointing my nominee, Corey Schramm, to the Criminal Justice Advisory Council.
Hanslick, second.
I'll give it to Commissioner Allen Brand there. I so moved, and Commissioner Allen Brand did, Allen Brand provided a second. Not seeing further questions or comments at this time, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye. We have seven in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Very good. Thank you so much. And at this time, we'll move on to the action agenda. Start with item number 11. This is Resolution Number WD 25-021. We'll have a public hearing and consider approving an enlargement of the consolidated main sewer district. I am now opening this public hearing, and I invite, will invite Aaron Witt from Johnson County Wastewater to provide any further update that he would like to provide regarding this matter that was presented at last week's agenda review. Mr. Witt, welcome back.
Good morning, Aaron Witt with Wastewater. I don't have additional information from last week's presentation, so I'll stand for any questions.
Very good. Thank you so much. This being a public hearing, any member of the public is welcome at this time to provide public comment relating to this enlargement of the consolidated main sewer district. There was no one who had registered for this item, but I'll ask again if anybody would like to provide public comment at this time. Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and invite conversation from the Board of County Commissioners. Any questions or comments at this time? Seeing none, how about a motion? Commissioner Brewer.
I move the Board adopt Resolution Number WD 25-021, approving the enlargement of the consolidated main sewer district for a tract of land at 18845 Lackman Road.
Allen Brand, second.
So moved by Commissioner Brewer, and seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand. Are there any questions and comments at this time? Seeing none, the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye. Seven in favor, none against. Is that consistent with your count?
Yes, it is.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Witt. At this time, we'll now move on to item number 12 on your agenda. This is an allocation of reserves for JCPRD for the purchase of outdoor video display and sound equipment in advance of the World Cup for Theater in the Park. Jeff Stewart, Executive Director of JCPRD, is back before us. Mr. Stewart, thanks for your presentation last week on this item. At this time, is there anything further you'd like to provide before we consider this item?
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Nothing additional to provide, just to echo a thanks for your consideration to support JCPRD's efforts to provide some experiences throughout the World Cup event in alignment with the Board of County Commissioners' priority to support the World Cup. I stand for any questions you may have.
Mr. Stewart, thank you very much. I'm going to ask you to step aside. We do have registered public comment on this item, so I'd ask the clerk to let me know when we are ready to receive said public comment. All right.
Ben Hobart, Westwood Hills. Chairman Kelly and Commissioners, I offer the following comments in JCPRD's request for invading general fund reserves for $291,968 for an outdoor video display. One, Johnson County Parks and Rec received $39.3 million ad valorem tax support in the 2025 budget year. JCPRD is spending $10.6 million on its administrative headquarters and $17.7 million on soccer fields at the Mid-Americo Sports Complex, among other projects. I think it is reasonable that their board can adjust their budget to find $291,968 rather than ask the county to bleed its reserves. Two, further in that regard, JCPRD is funding other costs of the World Cup watch party from JCPRD resources. They can easily fold this in and bear the costs by using their resources. What is JCPRD's current unencumbered cash balance? Three, the briefing sheet indicates the proposed equipment will have a lifespan of 10 years. Why not have JCPRD issue a note payable to the county for $291,968 to be repaid next year or the year thereafter? Surely JCPRD can adjust its budget to that extent. Four, as a citizen, I listened to this board repeatedly stress the importance of reserves for the county's AAA bond rating, and yet then, the county routinely bleeds reserves for projects of this type. The hypocrisy is quite thick. Please have JCPRD issue a note payable to the county for this cost to be paid by the time of the watch party or such later date as the board determines is appropriate. Thanks for receiving my comments.
Thank you. Next is Charlotte O'Hara.
Well, this is an event that keeps on taking. I want to remind this board that, I believe it was in 2024, that Johnson County sent KC 2026 $1.5 million. $1.5 million. And now, the Parks and Rec is here asking you for $291,000-plus dollars for additional costs to host the World Cup. This is, this is absolutely shameful. And I agree with Mr. Hobart that you do continually talk about the importance of reserves, and yet, here you go again, taking out of reserves. And I know that the World Cup is supposed to be, going to be generating so much tax revenue. Well, I will not be holding my breath on that, but please, please, take your, take your responsibilities seriously and stop this. Stop this ever, ever, ever-expanding universe of yours and spending. Thank you.
All right. I believe that's all the registered public commentators that we have for this item, so I'd invite Mr. Stewart back for questions and comments. And, Mr. Stewart, let me start. First of all, thank you for the time that JCPRD has spent already considering the impact on what may be the biggest, not only sporting event, but tourism event in the county's history, or in our lifetimes. Understanding not only the potential economic impact, but the opportunity for visibility for Johnson County on not only the local or national stage, but really the world stage is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. This is the biggest sporting event in the world, by far. Billions of people will watch the World Cup. 650,000 people are expected to travel to the metropolitan region to enjoy the six matches, the festivities, the fanfests, et cetera. And so I'm glad that both the Board of County Commissioners, but also JCPRD, are being intentional about how we manage this opportunity and what the potential return can be and the legacy can be for Johnson County and for JCPRD. If you could talk a little bit about the partnership of this particular project, not just the cost of the via boards, but the expected expenditures and efforts that JCPRD would match to this potential to host watch parties at Theater in the Park, I'd really appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. As I shared last week, JCPRD would be investing in some of the other support services related to these watch parties, as well as other things to welcome the visitors to our community and support our citizens throughout the World Cup event next summer. So there are some additional costs that may be associated with that through marketing, support supplies, staffing, security, and so forth. So we're committed to doing that as part of our partnership and our efforts to this, offer this to the community. The equipment that's being requested at this point in time would support the watch parties and would be a legacy item that would continue to support other future events and services and things, both at JCPRD and potentially the county should, that equipment be desired for other, other purposes and so forth. But we do have some plans in 2026 to move forward with some investment from JCPRD funds to support these kinds of activities as we welcome our visitors and support our citizens.
Thank you very much. Further questions, comments? Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Chair. Last week, I said I was supportive of this item, and I still am. Again, the comments that this board continually bleeds its reserves is, is beyond something that I believe that this board does. That's not reality of what we do. But in this situation, this is a unique opportunity for the exposure of Johnson County to our visitors, and I think, as you've already stated, Chairman, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to put our best foot forward to visitors and to people from across the region to show, showcase Johnson County and its amenities. And I think it's a proper expenditure for this, these types of events that, again, can't go on without this type of equipment. So I'm very much in favor of this action.
Thank you. Commissioner Allen Brand.
Thank you, Chair. Well, first of all, I want to talk about partnerships a little bit because several of us voted for a partnership with the city of Olathe on the grounds out here. And there has been more than one time there's 2,700 people out there experiencing that. And that revenue from the businesses that are around here has almost two or three times the amount that they're taking in for those small businesses. So I believe that with the research that you've done, that you guys are going to create revenue around your area for food, all kinds of different events going on. And I also want to say, but I think one thing that we're missing here is those baseball fields and stuff, if I remember right, and I might get the little numbers a little bit wrong, but it was almost $3 billion, almost $4 in economic development. So according to the survey that we took in Johnson County, Parks and Res, and I have to bite my lip, number one, and that is important, those parks and preserving those parks and doing your legacy plan is proper planning for a capital improvement plan. I believe that you're going to take this revenue that we're sharing, and you're going to probably triple it in different events that are going to go on. And I think you can not only use them, you've already just demonstrated, your whole staff, not only do you provide services for children, JCDs, there's so many more things that you're going to be able to do with, also with the improvements this made for accessibility. You know, so you're going to see seniors out there. I, I'm excited. I support this 100%. I think you guys are going to take away with it, and I'm excited to hear back what, what the outcome of this is. But I, I think, I just, I believe this is the right thing to do, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. And if, Myers, if you're not willing to do a motion, once everybody's finished here, I'll second it for you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Hanslick, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, Mr. Stewart. I, I think the purchase of this video display is, is a great idea. I'm still struggling to understand what, what would be the, what would be the impact on JCPRD's budget if this board would not approve it? Is it something outside of the JCPRD budget that would then not be able to be purchased? Or, and I think I mentioned last week, looking for sponsorships. Commissioner Allen Brand mentioned the, the Johnson County Square. That was something I also had opposed because I thought we, we should have been, had more, more investment from the community. So maybe you could help, help me better understand why, why this item is coming before the board when we don't have other JCPRD expenses coming before the board? And again, I think it's a great idea. I just am trying to figure out who should be paying for it.
Absolutely. I appreciate your question, Commissioner. I'll do my best. This purchase for this equipment is really in reaction to the Board of County Commissioners' priorities that have been established, World Cup being one of those. It's not a budgeted item in the JCPRD budget, in the capital improvement plan budget for 2025, so this is not a planned investment for JCPRD this year. We, understanding the priority and understanding the World Cup is coming to our community, we have been able we have been able to plan accordingly for the proposed 2026 budget, where we don't have equipment like this in that budget. However, we do have some dollars that are planned for to support these kinds of activities, watch parties being one of those. So understanding the desire from the county as a whole, and the partnerships that we are forming with various departments and agencies to welcome 600,000 people to this community while we support our citizens and create these environments that our citizens can also enjoy, that's why the ask from the JCPRD Board of Commissioners is coming to you today. There is something I stated last week. It is a bit of a pressing item as well. This isn't something we can wait on. There's been some uncertainties with availability on equipment and building these things, and the unstable environment with supplies and so forth. The lead time that we're hearing anywhere from eight to 11 months, so we need to pull the trigger on this, so to speak, if we are going to commit to hosting these watch parties. I would like to speak a little bit to the partnerships, and I think sponsorships is certainly one of those things that we'll seek. That is not new territory for JCPRD. We have a very active enterprise operation. Part of that includes advertisements and sponsorships which support those functions, like watch parties and the many other events that we have. So we'll be very active in seeking that. We'll have to be very cautious and be tuned in to what FIFA will allow through licensing and so forth, and their arrangements with their partners and so forth. But we will, we will certainly do that. And we're having active conversations with other potential partners like we always do. For example, Pitch Lenexa has some plans in the Lenexa City Center. There's some real possibilities of some energy with Shawnee Mission Park and Lenexa City Center being adjacent to each other, and how we can really build this thing to work collaboratively on this. So we'll certainly lean into those as well. But I hope that helps answer your question as to the why this is a little bit unusual, but it is in response to the desire for us as a county as a whole to support and welcome folks coming from all over the globe, and for the energy from our own citizens as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Your explanation is very helpful in pointing out that this is a one-time, one-off, unusual request, that the time is of the essence, that it's not been budgeted in the JCPRD budget. And I think because it's a one-time, I can be supportive of that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brewer?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Stewart. I do have a question for you. One of the, one of the discretion tracks that we've gone down, and I'd like to go down a little bit further, is being intentional in creating some large gathering space events that will attract people to spend some of their enjoyment time of the World Cup here in Johnson County. And when we make an investment like this, I kind of think about my old days in tourism and economic development, you know, we would do pro formas, in the sense of, if I'm going to make an investment of X amount of money, how can I make a return? I know I'm asking a question when you're in the very early days of planning, and you've already teased out a little bit of an opportunity with Lenexa City Center, but how can we be intentional in this event planning to bring in as many local vendors as possible who could participate and actually see an economic, you know, gain, right, from us taking this investment into trying to host a larger gathering space? Because you outlined in your previous presentation last week that it's not just that you have the stage, and it's not just that you have the seating capacity, but you also have the parking capacity, and you're working with our transit, and you're working, coordinating with other jurisdictions on this. But I also want to make sure that we're, how are we coordinating with local businesses who could be a part of events like these out at the park during the World Cup, so that we can make sure we're maximizing the economic, you know, tourism dollar impact in our community as a part of this investment? Can you share a little bit about your early thoughts on that?
I'd be happy to. Thank you for your question, a very good one. That work begins yesterday, quite frankly. We have been collectively talking about what partners to bring in, what businesses, vendors, and so forth. This one, the World Cup, is a little, it's new to all of us. We still have a lot of questions we're seeking answers to as well, and I think that's okay. Things are starting to evolve, and we're working through some of those details. So as far as a return on the investment for the World Cup watch parties, we do strongly believe we will have some revenues coming in. To say it will, it will match or exceed all expenditures in total, we're not there yet. But I also see that this investment would be a multi-layer type investment, meaning this kind of equipment would support activities we currently have today. Think of things like Theater in the Park. It will only enhance those kinds of productions and things. It'll give us the ability to plan for other events that would need equipment like this, all attracting our residents and visitors to this. Our recent effort with Trust for Public Land to put a scale onto what the return is on investment in park and recreation services is quite clear. What we've done over the last eight years, we've seen a great increase in economic impact, and I think that pattern will continue through events, through programs, through investments in our properties, and obtaining more. So I think, I think we will see this as a kind of a legacy item that will support existing and give us an opportunity to add additional events that will attract those things.
I appreciate your response. And just to clarify, I wasn't thinking of just economic return to Park and Rec in the county itself. I was thinking of us doing a forward investment that, that helps economic return to businesses within the area, to kind of give them a space that would have access to large gatherings, that they would have a higher concentration of business than if we were waiting everybody, for everybody to go to them.
Yeah, certainly very much part of that. And some of our existing events, quite frankly, we do welcome those businesses and vendors and so forth. A recent example, the Meadowbrook Park Festival, that had 5,000-plus folks from our community enjoy that. You probably, if you were there, you noticed that there were several vendors and things benefiting from that. So that, that's something that is part of our fabric today, and will continue to grow tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few questions, if I could, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioner Brewer's question raised another. Mr. Stewart, I appreciate your presentation, and it's an interesting notion, and I think it's well within the Parks Board's prerogative to pursue this. A clarification, if I could. I was looking at the briefing sheet that the Parks Board did for the, or the Parks Department did for the Parks Board, and it made some reference that the JCPRD's broader World Cup viewing opportunities are estimated to exceed $500,000, covering staffing, security, parking, and so forth. Can you translate that for me? When it says opportunities for, are estimated to exceed $500,000, is that revenues for the Parks Department or the community? How do I interpret that?
Sure. I appreciate the question. The number is, is an estimate as we were planning on watch parties. So there are other things, other expenditures that will fold into that, in providing security for the venue, seasonal staff, part-time staff, other staff.
So this is a cost, not a revenue?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I misinterpreted that.
Yes, sir. It's a cost. Now, there will be offsetting revenues for some of those costs. And in my attempt to respond to Commissioner Brewer, we're not certain exactly what that will be. We're still planning through.
Fair enough. Now, the use, the Parks Board coming to the commission, asking for funds of this nature, general funds, I just don't remember that ever happening. Do we have a history of doing that, or the Parks Board coming to the commission for general fund support?
It's not a common practice typically.
I just don't remember it ever.
I think historically, there have, over time, and I'm not coming up with anything with my experience.
I couldn't think of anything.
I think that there has.
I was just wondering. So then my last question, I was looking at the '26 budget calendar, the CIP, and if my calculations are correct, the Parks Department is planning to expend about $351,000 for art over the next five years. If this is, if this TV, I'm not being, trying to be pejorative, but the TV screen, if it's a priority, then could we not use, could the Parks Department not use these planned expenditures for the arts instead of coming to the county for general fund use?
That's not something that we have explored with the board. The public art program at JCPRD is a fairly young program. It's a little over three years of age, and has had tremendous success, tremendous response, including this past weekend. I should note that that half percent of the JCPRD capital improvement program only funds roughly half of the public art program. The rest of it is done by seeking donations and other partnerships throughout the community, and it's just been a tremendous success and something that I feel comfortable in stating that the JCPRD would like to continue that with the energy that's been behind it thus far.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
There's a track record there, not just with art, but when you look at the general services and amenities that JCPRD provides, that a very large portion of them are either fee-supported, or supported through partnerships or grants, and are not just supported by property tax. And I appreciate that. We're able to bring a better quality of life to our community, and it's not just at the expense of residential property owners. We make sure that we be prudent in the investments that are made to match with opportunities for other revenue sources, and therefore, better enhance the quality of life. Art specifically, you can make, and the Arts Council of Johnson County, who is now our local arts agency, has done a great job of showing the economic impact of art in our community. But art is so much more. It's good for your health. It's a gathering beacon for folks. It helps define community, and there's placemaking. And I can go on down the rabbit hole, but I appreciate that you seek partnerships. And really, that's what you're doing here today. It wasn't necessarily the plan that we would, several years ago, before we knew that the World Cup was coming to Johnson County, that we would be pursuing different opportunities. And that was already planned in a capital improvement plan that looks out more than 12 months. So I appreciate the ask. I'm supportive of it in that partnership, and I think in the track record of partnership that JCPRD has made, to take the opportunities when we find them, and I think this is a good one.
Thanks, sir.
So I'll invite Commissioner Myers at this time to make his motion, if he so desires, and Commissioner Allen-Bran can second it, and then we can continue.
Thank you, Chair. I move to approve and authorize the reallocation and expenditure of county general fund reserves in the amount of $291,968 to JCPRD for the purchase of outdoor video display, sound equipment, and associated technical infrastructure to support a World Cup watch party site at Theater in the Park as part of a broader public engagement strategy for the 2026 FIFA World Cup.
Allen-Bran, second.
So that was so moved by Commissioner Myers and seconded by Commissioner Allen-Bran. Going back to Commissioner Ashcraft, it looks like.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, as I said, it's well within the Parks Department's, Park Board's prerogative to pursue something like this. I can see why there's an interest by staff. I think it's, it's an interesting opportunity, and it, it could be a great success. I think what I'm struggling with is the request to the general fund, rather than looking at its existing planning and revenue streams. And since they have monies available, or plan to be available through the half percent for the arts, I could, I could be supportive of the county offering a loan to Parks to help fund this project upfront. That would give them time then to seek sponsors to offset the cost, and then that would not have as much of an impact or delaying factor in their arts program. And if the commission were to agree, I could be supportive. Otherwise, my vote would reflect that concern.
Thank you very much. I'm not seeing further questions or comments at this time, so I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the motion pending. Just made it in time.
Commissioner Faust?
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer?
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
No.
Commissioner Allen-Bran?
Allen-Bran, aye.
Chairman Kelly?
Aye. Six in favor, one against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you for your partnership and forward to '26.
It's going to be a good one. All right. At this time, we will move on to a manager's memo, so I will invite Ms. Postock Ferguson to provide some updates.
Chairman and Commissioners, good morning. I have two items this morning. The first is the CRI report, the County Economic Research Institute indicators report. It's the July edition. Most of the indicators are based on May, May year-to-date data. So in May, a few highlights. In May 2025, the unemployment rate was 3.5% compared to 3.2% the previous year. Year-to-date, single-family home sales through May were 3,330 compared to 3,062 last year. This is an 8.8% increase. Single-family building permits year-to-date through May issued were 773 compared to 696 the previous year, and this is 11% increase. Retail sales for Johnson County year-to-date through April were $6.54 billion compared to $6.28 billion through the same time period, and this is a 4% increase. The next item, Chairman, is the notice of public hearing for the city of Overland Park to establish a Tax Increment Financing District, or TIF. The city of Overland Park conducted a public hearing on Monday, July 7th, to consider the establishment of a redevelopment district. The proposed district is located near the intersection of Lamar and 115th Street in Overland Park, Kansas. The project includes developing areas in and around Black and Beach site. The initial program as identified in the application includes Black and Beach's headquarters of over 612,000 square feet, and total proposed office space of approximately 994,000 square feet, 1,884 residential units, and a mix of multifamily townhomes and condominiums, 550,000 square feet of retail space, 165-room hotel, and over 5,900 structured parking spaces. So a copy of the TIF documents are attached, and with that, Chairman, I stand for questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Brewer?
Yes, I do have a question on this, and I've read through all the, all the documents. And this is not really a question on the merit of the project. I'm not commenting on that. That's something that the city has taken under consideration, and I believe has passed at a public hearing on July 7th. I have a process question, and that is, it is the process that after a city does a public hearing on a TIF project and, and passes that ordinance to create the TIF, the county government and Blue Valley School District, in this case, Blue Valley School District, have 30 days following the public hearing to determine whether the district has an adverse effect. And for me, part of that determination would be the financial feasibility analysis, which would include the projected increment broken down by taxing jurisdiction, which in all the documents that we received, states will accompany the project plan, but isn't in the documents that we received. And since that 30-day curing period would have begun July 7th, that means we would have to make a determination by August 7th. If we did have any concerns on an adverse effect based on the creation of this TIF, so when will we be seeing the data that we would need to make that determination?
I don't have that answer, but I will say what's been the history of TIF projects is that, yes, there is that dilemma, because the plans, when the cities bring the plans forward, it's typically outside of that 30 days, and that's when they have the information. forward, it's typically outside of that 30 days, and that's when they have the information. So I think if there's questions on that, it should go directly to the city, and we can forward information if you like. I don't know if legal has anything to add on process.
Chair and Commissioner Brewer, the county manager is absolutely correct. However, what we have done internally when asked is attempt to reconstruct through marked app and through the budget to determine that. But unless we have the information, that's a difficult process.
So I hear we have a process issue because I, you know, I take responsibility, any of this responsibility, very seriously, as we all do at this dais. And I feel like I am not equipped with the data to know if we should be talking about this issue, having, having any concerns about this issue. So that's, that's something that I'd, I'd like to have a further conversation on how we remedy this on a go-forward scenario. Either the response timeline has to be changed, or the mechanism by which we get data in order to be able to render, you know, any input on this, on an issue such as this has to change. One of those deltas have to change. Otherwise, I don't feel like I'm, I'm understanding what my, my, what our true authentic role is in this conversation.
And Chair, if I may respond, even if I had the information that you're requesting, the statute doesn't define of how we are adversely affected.
Okay.
And so when you don't have a definition, you're indicating that we need this piece of information to make this determination. Adversely affected, you know, can get into many different items and not relying sole on that item to provide us direction. So there's a, it's not clear. And so I think this is a statutory issue, not a process issue. It is, you know, giving us guidance to understand that. So that's where, you know, at this point, I don't believe, even if I got you the data, that would actually even, you know, factor in. We have sat down and looked at, you know, kind of what we could bring forward. But when you have no development or zero development, any money that we bring in, you know, is a benefit. And to say that we're adversely affected when we don't know, other than what they preliminarily have provided us.
And I appreciate that there are other elements to look at, other than just a fiscal impact. So I do appreciate that. I just felt I was a little lacking in, in substantive information to have a informed conversation on this particular issue beyond the plans that were provided. So thank you.
Can I add also that our staff has asked for additional information? We haven't received any. And I think, I don't know if they have it yet. So, thank you.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Thank you. I appreciate Commissioner Brewer's questions. I would say and maybe suggest if she wanted to look back in previous records, we've had numerous conversations and study sessions, cows, all kinds of things on this very topic over the past few years. So you may want to reference back to those documents that may answer some of your questions.
I appreciate that. And I do want to underscore, this is not about the merit of this particular project, and it's not about the merit or the need of the project. I've, I have full confidence that the city in which the project is being developed in has done that work. It's understanding what our role looks like and how we are equipped with information in order to fulfill our role. So that's really, it's only about that, not about the merit of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Brewer. I think your questions are on point. All due respect to the county counselor, adversely affected is not defined by state statute. But I, when I hear that, I always think of the term pornography. I don't know how to define it either, but I know it when I see it. And circumstances like this, you're absolutely right, the merit of the project, I'm not questioning that. But what is the potential adverse effect? What's the impact on affordable housing? What's the impact on transit? What, what kind of tax break will there be given for the, the building of Starbucks and fast food restaurants? Is that the best way to use a resource for the people that it will, will be servicing versus the ones that we have responsibility for? And will Johnson County, and this is most important for me, will we be at the table when those project decisions are made so that it will be taken into consideration? How many units are built? The type of people served? What public services may, what we need to support, not just by the city, by the county? I would, if I thought it would pass, I would be glad to make a motion to rescind this back to the city until we have that financial analysis so we can be assured of what the impact will be and ask respectfully that Johnson County be at the table to be part of the conversations. Not to make decisions, because that is up to the city, but to at least understand, and so that they fully understand what the potential impact is on the county.
I think this is a longer discussion when we're, and I appreciate it. I agree with Commissioner Hanslick. There, there has been discussion on this. And I think understanding what the county's role is, is also important. And then what's the role of the municipality? And what is in their purview as opposed to the county's, too? So I think that's a healthy discussion, and one that I'm willing to have, especially as we consider how we can be intentional about economic development in this county, how we can be supportive, how we can be proactive, but how we can be responsible. So I look forward to that continued discussion.
Chairman, that concludes my report.
All right.
Thank you.
Ms. Postock Ferguson, thank you very much. At this time, we, there's been a request for executive sessions. And so at this time, we'll hear a motion for an executive session. A first motion from Commissioner Hanslick.
Do we want to do it now?
Yes.
Okay.
I move that the board recess its open meeting and convene an executive session at 10:45 a.m. for a period of 60 minutes. The session, conducted under KSA 75-4319B2, is for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel, which would be privileged in the attorney-client relationship to discuss potential litigation related to the Attorney General Opinion 2025-13. The board will reconvene an open session in this room at 11:45 a.m. The following individuals will attend the discussion. The county manager, deputy county manager, and chief counsel.
Allen Brand, second.
Moved by Commissioner Hanslick, seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand. The clerk called the roll and the motion, please.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye. We have seven in favor. And then against, is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Okay. We'll be in recess then. Thank you all very much.
I've got the heat cups.
Oh, no.
Between my own.
So he goes.
We are back on the record. Correct? Okay, we are back on the record out of executive session. No actions being taken at this time, but we will hear a motion for a continued executive session from Commissioner Hanslick.
I move that the board recess its open meeting and continue an executive session at 12:00 PM for a total period of fifteen?
Thirty.
I'm sorry, thirty minutes. This session conducted under KSA 754319B2 is for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel, which would be privileged in the attorney-client relationship to discuss potential litigation related to the Attorney General opinion 2025-13. The board will reconvene an open session in this room at 12:30 PM, and the following individuals will attend the discussion: the county manager, deputy county manager, and chief counsel.
Moved by Commissioner Hanslick, seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand with the clerk call the roll, please.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye. Seven in favor and none against, is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Okay, we'll be in recess, thank you.[1338.88]
Don't get too excited.
Yeah, don't get too excited.
No cartwheels this time there?
Yes. Whenever you're ready.
We're ready.
Hello, we are back on the record at 12:30. No action, we are out of executive session, but no action is being taken at this time. However, we're going to hear a motion for a continued executive session from Commissioner Hanselk.
I move that the board recesses its open meeting and continue an executive session at 12:35 PM for a total period of 15 minutes. This session, conducted under KSA 754319B2, is for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel, which would be privileged in the attorney-client relationship, to discuss potential litigation related to the Attorney General opinion 2025-13. The board will reconvene in open session in this room at 12:50 PM. The following individuals will attend the discussion: County Manager, Deputy County Manager, and Chief Counsel.
Allen Brand, second.
Moved by Hanselk, seconded by Allen Brand. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanselk.
Hanselk, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye. We have seven in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
We will again be in recess. Thank you all very much.
I mean, this is one of the biggest shows in the world.
Yeah.
Hard time.
What show was it?
Ted Lasso.
Oh, 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 Ted Lasso.
Yeah.
I think we could create a Ted Lasso movie.
Yes.
I mean, we'll take it.
Yeah, we'll take.
Welcome back, ladies and gentlemen. We are out of executive session. We're going to hear a motion for Commissioner Hanslick at this time.
I move that the board direct chief counsel to prepare a resolution modifying the ballot language in Resolution Number 052-25 regarding the countywide retailer's sales tax and extending the election from November 4, 2025, to a special March 2026 election, and that the board authorize the chief counsel to file a declaratory action on behalf of the county to clarify state statute KSA 1212-187B5 and 21.
Allen Brand, second.
Moved by Commissioner Hanslick, seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand. Clarification, Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I have reservations regarding this action, and my vote will reflect those concerns.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll on the motion.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye, seven in favor, nine against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Very good. We'll be in recess. Thank you all for your patience.[175.12]
Just five or 10?
If you were just...
Ten. No, 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 that's a smart suggestion. Okay, we are back on the record at 12:50. No action is being taken at this time, but we are going to hear a motion for a continued executive session from Commissioner Hanslick.
I move that the board recess its open meeting and continue an executive session at 12:55 PM for a total period of 10 minutes. This session, conducted under KSA 754319B2, is for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel, which would be privileged in the attorney-client relationship to discuss potential litigation related to Attorney General opinion 202513. The board will reconvene in open session in this room at 1:05 PM. The following individuals will attend the discussion: county manager, deputy county manager, and chief counsel.
Ellen Brand, second.
So moved by Commissioner Hanslick, and seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand. Will the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye, seven in favor, nine against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Very good. We'll be in recess. Thank you all for your patience.
It's exciting stuff. I mean, this is one of the biggest shows in the world.
Hard time.
Which show is it?
Ted Lasso.
Oh, 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 Ted Lasso.
I think we could create a Ted Lasso movie.
I mean, we'll take it.
Yeah, we'll take.
Welcome back, ladies and gentlemen. We are out of executive session. We're going to hear a motion from Commissioner Hansel at this time.
I move that the board direct chief counsel to prepare a resolution modifying the ballot language in Resolution Number 052-25 regarding the countywide retailer's sales tax and extending the election from November 4th, 2025, to a special March 2026 election, and that the board authorize the chief counsel to file a declaratory action on behalf of the county to clarify state statute KSA 1212-187B5 and 21.
Allen Brand, second.
Moved by Commissioner Hansel, seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand. Clarification, Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I have reservations regarding this action, and my vote will reflect those concerns.
Thank you. So, no further questions. I'd ask the clerk to call the role on the motion.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hansel.
Hansel, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
No.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye.
That's six votes in favor and one against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
All right, very good. The motion is passed. This time, we're going to move into Commissioner comments, and I'm going to take the moment of privilege to go first here today. I understand that there's likely curiosity over the motion that was just adopted. The Attorney General doesn't think that calling 911 or having an ambulance show up at your house to deliver life-saving care or a mental health co-responder counts as public safety. I strongly disagree with that. It's also not his decision to make. However, unlike Mr. Kobach or Senator Thompson, I'm not going to play politics with people's lives. When I was elected chairman, I promised to protect the fundamental feeling of safety in Johnson County that makes this an amazing place to live, an amazing place to work, or retire, or raise a family. I think we all take that promise extremely seriously. We're going to modify the public safety sales tax renewal question, move it on the ballot from this November to March to also see clarity on the ballot language so that we can avoid lengthy or costly litigation and focus our energy and resources on serving the public. The current public safety sales tax doesn't expire until March of 2027, which gives us time to seek this clarity on these issues and still return the ballot in 2026 for the voters to decide, for the voters to decide. All of us on this dice remain committed to providing public safety funding for our rapidly growing and our aging population here in Johnson County. We want residents to feel confident that we are asking them to vote on something that's not only legal and legitimate, but is also necessary and critical. Johnson County governments and our municipal partners, all which receive 36% of the sales tax proceeds from Public Safety Sales Tax III, will continue to benefit this from this tax while we seek clarity. But make no mistake, I think that this is a direct attack on responsive and responsible local government. I think it's a direct attack on voter-approved investments in public safety and a further erosion of local control from the state. Public Safety Sales Tax III is a path that we've used to keep up with public safety funding needs at the county and the city level. However, certain extreme politicians want us to defund this source, to defund police facilities and dispatch radios, and to force us to raise your property taxes rather than spread out the costs of providing these services, rather than letting the people vote, which Kobach and Senator Thompson think they know better. And their outdated concept of public safety is a latest chapter in a long story where extremists have forced property taxes higher and higher while eroding local control and sabotaging voter-backed investments in public safety. So, I'm proud of this board's action, and I'm supportive thereof, and I'll leave my Commissioner comments there. I'll invite Commissioner Allen Brand.
Well, thank you, Chair. Well, it just so happens on Monday, one thing that I have always liked to do is to go with local Girl Scouts, purchase cookies, and then go out with the Girl Scouts to deliver it, so I kind of rotate around. So, we went out to, in my district, and also Commissioner Brewer's district, because some of that fire department, but met with Fire One, Northwest Consolidated, and also MEDAC. And it's just fun to see the Girl Scouts interact with the firefighters and the first responders, and I wanted to share, they all got a, one of the fire helmets, whatever you call them, and then a little fire truck, so I wanted to share the fire truck. And, you know, it was just really cool to see the interaction between the kids and then understanding the questions that came up about the fire truck and, you know, just, so anyway, I just wanted to share that. Also, yesterday, I attended the airport board meeting, and just to let you know, we had some serious flooding on 165th and 56th Highway, and people responded very quickly. In fact, our own staff at the airport, we literally had cars that were, they needed to be rescued, so our own Larry Peed at the airport was actually helping do rescue. So, Fire One and the Olathe Fire Department came in response very quickly, because as you know, you saw that there was a woman that died in one of the flash floods. So, I really appreciate their hands on deck in taking care of that. So, I wanted to share that, because if you get an opportunity, thank them, and then I know they are working with our team, also with Olathe, to try to help figure out how we can fix that. Also, we had several, Flora Foods will be probably having a ribbon cutting soon, you know, they have several leases coming up, and I can share that with everyone, but I just wanted to share those points with you again, you know, hearing about New Century, how the snow removal happened with our staff there, having the ability to go out and clear that. We actually had ours cleared where KCI had to close, so just seeing all the great things going on, I would invite you at some point in time, maybe to come out and visit one of the airport board meetings, so, thank you.
Commissioner Fast, why don't you go next?
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two items, Mr. Chairman. The first, during the public comments today, we had an individual who raised questions about some mail processing involving our tax system, and over the last, oh, four or five months, I have received any number of those calls, and I think it's a question that has floated out there generally. I don't know if other commissioners have had those calls. I just wanted to share that the, part of the reason why this is taking place is that our staff went forward with an open bid process, and a bank called US Bank, which is chartered here in Kansas, as well as probably all states in the Union, offered a bid almost a half million dollars less than the next competitive bid provided. So, why, it might, while, excuse me, it might look unusual to be sending your mail to a St. Louis P.O. box. It's in good order because of the savings. Most mail is processed by, particularly by large corporations, is centrally processed so that they can save money themselves, and by doing that, pass it on to us. So, while it may look unusual, it is nothing inappropriate, and as a matter of fact, I would argue makes good business sense, and I believe everyone on this commission supported that. Secondly, Mr. Chairman, to change gears, this past week or so has been somewhat challenging for some of us, somewhat trying, and I think we have all shared our appreciation and support for those that have had changes in their family and their lives, and I know that some of us were able to attend the services for the county manager's mother this past week. But on a happier note, while it's a difficult time, I want the county manager to know she's appreciated and that we support the fact that she had a birthday, and I hope she had a few minutes with her family to reflect upon the good times and what she has meant to us, as well as, I am sure, what she meant to her mother. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you, sir. Thank you. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Ashcraft, for making the clarification. I've been getting many of the emails and responded in a similar fashion, but I appreciate your clarification on that. Commissioner...
Allen Brand, Ashcraft?
Commissioner Allen Brand. Commissioner Allen Brand, I think I'm in charge of eating those cookies. So, I appreciate you bringing those for me to taste test, and I did my job well on that. This week, I attended the Chief Elected Officials Board Meeting for Workforce Partnership, and some great discussion, some important discussion. We're trying to get prepared for what we believe is going to be some funding decrease from the federal government that's going to cause this organization to take some measures that I believe are important to take and hopefully get, keep things moving forward and not having too much of a setback. But it was a very good meeting. I also wanted to toot our horn a little bit. I think we don't do that enough sometimes, and I think it's for people, for people to hear some of the good things that are going on in our county, and myself being the liaison to the Parks and Recreation Board, I wanted to read a little bit of a statement. By vote of the community of Johnson, the Johnson County Posts has once again recognized JCPRD with multiple awards highlighting our dedication and excellence in Parks and Recreation Services. For the third consecutive year, JCPRD was honored with the prestigious Best Large Employer in Johnson County Award. This remarkable achievement is a testament to the incredible services that are provided every day and a clear symbol of the amazing culture collectively shaped by the JCPRD amazing team. Additionally, JCPRD proudly received eight other awards in various categories, some of them being, under childcare and activities, Best Summer Camp, Best After-School Care, Best Day Camp, under recreation, Best Park, Shawnee Mission Park, Best Disc Golf Course at Shawnee Mission Park, Best Dog Park at Shawnee Mission Park, and in the category of arts and entertainment, Best Performing Arts Venue, Theater in the Park, and Best Museum, Johnson County Museum. So, I think it's wonderful that they receive these accolades, and this was a vote of Johnson County residents in our community about these different programs that, and services that they receive.
Thank you. Sir, Commissioner Brewer?
Yes, first and foremost, I want to share my condolences with the family of Dr. Vidaya, who is, who died in the flash flood issue that we had last week, and just remind us that we have weather coming in as early as this evening, that they are also predicting could, once again, have flash flooding implications due to the amount of rainfall we've had over the last two weeks, so I do ask everyone to please take care. With, along with Commissioner Myers, also had the opportunity to attend the Chief Elected Officials Meeting, and so not only are we just so, we're fully kind of centered in this, as the federal budget document is implemented, right now, the prediction of cuts to workforce programs that impact local residents and the cuts to healthcare programs, because I also had the opportunity this week to meet with the director of a nonprofit healthcare organization, we are looking at very real cuts that will impact residents in our community's ability to find and maintain employment and the ability to be healthy. On a happier note, just want to give some activities that are going on in and around our community and within District Three. Just a reminder that now through August 3rd is the Sunflower Summer Program from Kansas Tourism, in which all Kansas students, pre-K through 12th grade, receive free admission to more than 200 venues, including Johnson County Museum, and then in my district, Museum at Prairie Fire, Deanna Rose Farmstead, Children's Farmstead, and the Overland Park Arboretum and Botanical Gardens. Also happening in District Three, Evan Health is partnering with Renewed Hope Food Pantry to provide free, healthy food for patients, community, and team members the first Wednesday of every month, and the bus will be at the Advent Health South Overland Park location Wednesday, August 6th, from 3:00 to 4:40 p.m. I also want to give a nod to the Johnson County Department of Health and Environment, who is providing three walk-in vaccination clinics to help students from preschool through 12th grade get caught up on shots they need to attend school and stay healthy. Those dates can be found on their website. The first one starts this Friday at the Health Services Building from 1:00 to 4:00, and continues on August 1st at the same location, and then at the Northeast Office Building in Mission, Kansas, on August 8th, 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. I appreciate their service on behalf of the health and well-being of children in Johnson County. Thank you. Those are my comments.
Commissioner Hansel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to first say thank you for your statement, and I certainly join you in that commitment to public safety, so thank you for those words. I also want to thank you for, and some of our other commissioners, Commissioner Brewer and Commissioner Ashcraft, for joining together last Friday to work on a Habitat House down in Olathe. We were all there in our shirt sleeves and wading through the mud, pounding nails, using nail guns. I've never used a circular saw before, and I got to cut some wood. We all came back with all of our fingers, but it was, it was a really nice way to join also with some of our colleagues at the city of Olathe, Mayor Bacon and Marge Vogt and Susan Sherman, so it was, it was a nice day of volunteering to come together and be able to work on a house that someday, soon, a family who could previously only dream of homeownership will be able to walk through those doors. Also wanted to speak to Johnson County Parks and Rec. Last Saturday, the chair and I were able to attend, and he actually spoke, at the ribbon cutting for the Fire Keepers Circle, which is, I have to say, one of the most beautiful public art installations I have ever seen anywhere, and the, this art piece recognizes the people of the Potawatomi Tribe who had been forced off their land in, I believe it was Indiana, and they were forced to march out here to what's now Olathe. Many people lost their lives during that march, especially children and older folks, and this, this public art piece commemorates that, that piece of our history, and as I stood there, I just felt so proud of Johnson County for being willing to, to honor and recognize that part of our history, to recognize that that land had a history way before it was a park, and that it has great meaning, and that we can learn from the past and, and make sure that this county is a place for everyone, and so I want to thank JCPRD and the artists and everyone who came out. It was a very moving and meaningful experience. Thank you.
Thank you all very much, and thank you all for your comments and for your work here today. That's the last item on our business agenda, and therefore, absent objection at this time, we will adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Two, they are relatively straightforward, here's hoping, and then thereafter, an agenda review. It is now approximately 1:30. We'll start at 1:40. Thank you all. We'll remain in recess till then.